Just normal sickness.
The cold still exists.
Uh huh. Sinuses still exist. That you didn't need one? Really? Is that because you got something else? Is that because you got something else, or were you sick recently?
Was me getting it the way I had it.
Needed a podium reminder?
It won't wane down or anything? Okay.
Good.
Long as you tell us what they are. Yeah, no.
You have as bad as you can get it, so.
No ma'am. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular session this evening. The first item on the agenda is roll call.
Mayor Jones?
Here.
Alderman Randolph?
Here.
Alderwoman Bibbs?
Here.
Alderman Hartman?
Here.
Alderman Runions?
Here.
Alderman Maloney?
Here.
Alderman Rousey?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Just a quick announcement, this is our first live streaming of our regular session. So we've got staff in the back doing their best to livestream and make sure that everything goes well. So those of you that will be coming up to the podium or the platform over there, feel free to get close to the microphone to make sure that we can hear you, and we will proceed accordingly. So, thank you. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our men and women in harm's way, as well as our public safety employees.
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very, very much. You may be seated. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Randolph?
I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as printed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey?
I'll second his motion.
It's been moved and second. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So tonight's agenda has been approved. The next item is the approval of the minutes from our regular session, August 23rd, 2022. Is there a motion?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs?
I move that we approve the amendments of the regular session, August 23rd, 2022.
Okay. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the regular session minutes from August 23rd, 2022 have been approved. The next area is awards presentation organizational business, and we have two. We have our proclamation for Constitution Week, and the ladies will join me there at the podium. And then we also have our proclamation for 2022 Incorporated 5,000 list of the fastest growing private companies. So what an honor and what a blessing. So, we'll get started. Good evening again. And it's always good to see you guys. We appreciate it.
You too, thank you.
Whereas the Little Blue River Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution is a service organization dedicated to service the nation whose objectives are historic preservation, promotion of education, and patriotic endeavor. And whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to the rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2022 marks the 235th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and the patriotic celebrations which we will commemorate it. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of our proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd is Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Leonard D. Jones Jr., Mayor of the City of Grandview, Missouri, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2022, as Constitution Week. And urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege invokes. Signed in the City of Grandview, Missouri, this 13th day of September, 2022, Leonard D. Jones, Mayor, attested by Becky Shimble, City Clerk. Thank you very much. I'm gonna let you hold the mic. Hey. I'm gonna let you guys hold this, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We really do appreciate that. We are a Grandview chapter. There are many chapters across the state of Missouri. We're proud to be in Grandview, Missouri. We were founded, actually, or organized in 1973. So this will be our 50th anniversary, and we're so looking forward to it. We have 48 members. Five of those are what we call a junior member, anyone who's 18 to 35 years old. Of course, that includes all of us, you know? But we appreciate this. We appreciate the mayor and the Board of Aldermen who always support us for our people who are out there every day on the streets guarding this city and taking care of the citizens. We thank you for your service as well. So God bless you and God bless America.
And the board would like to thank you as well. Absolutely. As usual, it's good to see you. And if I recall correctly, I think Alderman Hartman has some family members who's also... Yes, exactly. Who's also a part of this organization. So I just want to say that for sure. Absolutely. Yes. Fantastic. Once again, thank you very, very much. And next, we need to recognize Tax Pro Marketeer. Now, I'm gonna do something that... You know, I can do this. I can do this. I have been... I've been given an email, and I made some notes on my tablet. So let me... Let me do this the correct way. Again, this is a recognition that is pretty amazing all by itself. However, to make this list is an opportunity by itself and very, very difficult at best. It's amazing that we have a number of businesses in our city who have made this list. And it's great to know that we can recognize another one of those businesses tonight. And I'm going to go through this list, and I'm gonna do my best to call off some names. If I miss any names, I'm gonna make sure everybody else comes up. But this is based on what David provided me. Nate is the CEO of this awesome company. So Nate, could you come on up? Come on down, Nate. How's that? Okay. Thank you, sir. Troy is the COO. Is Troy here tonight? Come on down, Troy. Again, these are making a superb list, needless to say. Christian? Is Christian here? Couldn't make it tonight? Christian? Ben? Did Ben make it tonight? Ben made it tonight. Come on down, Ben. Amanda? Did Amanda get a chance to make it, or she did not make it? Okay, what about Becca? Well, hey, Becca's here, okay. Becca, give your phone to Kim right over here. Oh, she's got it? Okay. Come on down, Becca. And we've got Jennifer? Does she make it? Jennifer did make it. Come on down, Jennifer. Now, I take it by default Noah didn't make it. Noah didn't make it, okay. Did Sarah make it? Sarah did make it, okay. All right. Come on down, Sarah. All right. Eden? Eden, why don't you come on down, Eden? We cover the bases here. So come on down, Eden, as well. So fantastic. And again, this is... This is an amazing accomplishment. And you should be proud of yourselves. Because again, not many companies make this list. There's a lot of bad lists out there. This is a good list. This is an accomplishment list. And I think that's important to recognize you. So if you would, Nate, step on up here. And I'm gonna read this proclamation. So I've got the CEO and a COO who are leading the charge in this effort. And before I get started with proclamation, David, if you'd be so kind to step on up, and that would be awesome. David has been working very hard to make sure that we get a chance to recognize those who are accomplishing a lot in our city. Whereas Tax Pro Marketeer has been in business for over 15 years and located in Grandview since 2014. And whereas the marketing business is dedicated to helping independent tax and accounting professionals grow their practices through increasing leaf flow and profitability. And whereas Tax Pro Marketeer CEO Nate himself and is acknowledged an expert... And I want to read this slowly. An expert in using email, social media, and website marketing to grow any tax or accounting firm with strategies that are and must for any tax business or accounting pro and any small business owner who wants to grow their firm. Now, this is almost a guarantee. These guys can make significant difference in the tax and accounting world. So those small businesses out there, these are the individuals that they need to communicate with. And whereas their reputation stretches across the wide spectrum of specialties within our community and is built upon and how they prioritize timely, punchy, and fresh content. This fresh content maturing, authentic, and profitable relationships with clients, technical excellence, and results in the form of new prospects and retain clients, which is the most important lifeblood of any business. And whereas Tax Pro Marketeer is a keep... Is that right? A keep-certified patron. And this partner, and this is a certified partner that's a pretty important classification that you want to achieve. A digital marketeer certified agency and a recipient of a seven-figure agency's agency of the year award. And whereas Tax Pro Marketeer was recently included in the 2022 Incorporated 5,000 list of fastest-growing private companies. An accomplishment by itself. Now therefore, I, Leonard D. Jones Jr., Mayor of the City of Grandview, Missouri, do hereby congratulate CEO Nate Haggerty and his Grandview team at Tax Pro Marketeer for being awarded the 2022 Incorporated 5,000 list of fastest-growing private companies. And on behalf of the Grandview Board of Aldermen and the community and all of their past and current businesses and clients served and employed, I commend Tax Pro Marketeer for serving the community and wish them all the best in their future endeavors and business success. Signed in the City of Grandview, Missouri, the 13th day of September, 2022, Leonard D. Jones, Mayor, attested by Becky Shimble, City Clerk. Thank you, sir. Absolutely. Awesome. We want to hear from you. Either one of you. Feel free.
All right. Thank you, and I'll be short. I know you guys have real business to attend to. This was a little company that Troy and I started in my basement. Troy is my CEO, Troy Lakey. He's been with me from the beginning. And in Lee Summit, started in our basement, we realized we needed an office space. And so we popped over to 708 Main Street, got a couple offices there. We grew. Then we went over to 721 Main Street, got a few more offices there. We grew. Now we're on 714 Main Street. It says this Toplechase Building outside. It used to be Exodus Cry. And we're there for quite some time. Twenty of us. I cannot not point out Ben Groupman, our Director of Innovation, and his wife, Becca, who works with us. They're Grandview residents and amazing parents and incredible friends. Jen Sarver, who's our Director of Content. Sarah Jackman, who's our Project Manager. And my daughter Eden, who's a future employee of Tax Pro Marketeer. But yeah, making this list after 15 years in business is a pretty rare thing. And we... One of the things that shifted for us about three years ago, because they look... It's a blunt instrument. They look at revenue, top line revenue. That's it. But one of the things that shifted for us three years ago, we decided to invest into our team and our culture. And we take a week off as a team every eight weeks. Paid week off, part-time, full-time. And we call it our sabbatical rhythm. And since we did that, we discovered less is more. And we discovered that growth happens in the margins, and you don't have to kill yourself to grow. And so after 15 years of business, hitting this list for the first time, it's a testament, not necessarily to my team and me, but I think to the principles of, you know, even the biblical principles of less is more and good work is found when you pursue it in the context of life-giving, you know, rest. So anyway, thank you for this honor. Troy?
Thank you for the recognition. We appreciate it. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board, glad to thank you as well.
Hey Troy? You know, this is... This is important now. Yeah, this is, okay.
Hey, thank you. I saw you speak at the border a couple times.
Oh, absolutely, yes. God has blessed us richly.
I know.
So yes, we just keep blessing. Again, thank you again. Absolutely. Let's give them a round of applause. What an accomplishment. And if I recall correctly, this is only the second company in Grandview that we've been able to recognize to make this list. So you guys are in a very, very, very good group of people. Thank you very much. Absolutely. All right. The next thing on our agenda this evening is public comment. So anyone who would like to address the Board of Aldermen for public comment, please step up to the mic, state your name and address, and sign in. We do have a three-minute limit for public comment. So it is 7:18, so I declare public comment open. Do not see anyone, so I declare public comment closed. We have no public hearings this evening. The next group of items are consent items. So I'm going to do this a little bit different. I'm going to look for consent items, approval for consent items D and F through H. Is there a motion for consent items D and F through H?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Maloney?
Make a motion to approve consent items D and F through H as printed and presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs?
I second.
It's been moved and second. Any discussion on consent items D and F through H?
Mayor?
Alderman Hartman?
Jamal, I'd like to bring up that again on Lexington Plumbing. I saw that scheduled for the Parks Department again. I think there was three invoices. Again, I have nothing against Lexington. In fact, I know the owner of Lexington real well. Have nephew that works there. But I just think it's important that we do business, if we can, with Grandview businesses.
Staff has been notified about that, and they had internal conversations too. But also purchasing policy requires us to get bids unless it's an emergency fix, right? And they're gonna continue, keep an eye out for those that can be done in-house as long as we have competitive bids from our local businesses.
Appreciate that.
Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So consent items D and F through H have been approved. The next item we have is consent item E. Is there a motion for consent item E?
Mayor?
Alderman Randolph?
Make a motion to approve consent item E.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs?
I second.
It's been moved and second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Maloney?
Thank you for separating this consent item here. I'll be voting no on this consent item, but I do want to just make a statement why. The... I support getting new park signs there. Just don't support doing the View Community Center because I don't consider the community center a park. And it's also... There's no cost comparison on what it would cost just to fix it. We're just gonna replace it. And I don't think that'd be the wisest thing. That sign was actually built with the building to mirror the building when it comes to the glasswork and the little swoop at the top. So just replacing that with a park sign, I don't think is gonna do the building that much justice. And I don't think it's the wisest use of our taxpayer dollars because I think it just needs to get repainted on the south side. So the... Like I said, all the other park signs, I like the ideas to it and everything, but I'd encourage you to just improve the existing sign at the View. But I am gonna vote no on those items.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Randolph?
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs?
Aye.
Alderman Maloney?
Nay.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Rousey?
Aye.
Alderman Runions?
No.
And the consent item E is an echo. A consent item approving KC Sign Company for park sign upgrades have been approved. The next area is ordinances. Is there a motion for bill number 7648?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Maloney?
Move that bill number 7648 be placed on its first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor?
Alderman Runions?
I'll second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? After the reading.
Bill number 7648, an ordinance approving an agreement with Flock Group Incorporated for automatic license plate detection and authorizing payment.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna make a quick note here. I do want to recognize some of the park commissioners that did come out tonight. So Sarah, thank you, and Irene, thank you both for coming. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And I see we've got some park staff. Andy's here as well with Jared. So thank you, guys. I forgot to recognize you, and I wanted to recognize you. So thank you. And Becky, thank you for reading that. Any discussion on bill number 7648?
Mayor?
Alderman Hartman?
I had a question for maybe the chief. Just briefly, I think you said these readers will read the license plates, temporary plates also?
Correct.
When you read those, are you gonna try to... I mean, those or any other one that's maybe out of date? Or do you have an officer that's gonna pull those over? Or do you review those? And then, I guess, is it gonna be immediate after you read them and pull somebody over or something like that?
The system's not really meant for traffic enforcement. It's more for criminal apprehension. So it can read partial plates. A good example would be if we had an incident, let's say a robbery, and a witness was able to give us three digits of the license plate, we could actually enter those into the system, and then the system would start looking for that combination of digits, and they would alert us in that regard.
So that takes a little bit of time, not a whole lot, but a little.
Correct. But there is the option where we... If a car was stolen, let's say, and then the officer would be able to get an immediate alert that there's a car in the area that just got recorded that's stolen, and they could move into that area.
Okay.
Some police departments have had them like at shopping centers, and an officer will be in that area. And so they're already in the area, and then they'll get the alerts on their computer in the car, and then they could start looking for that car immediately.
Yeah, that's more my question. Somebody be around to...
Right. It's just not... It's not geared toward traffic enforcement. It's more criminal apprehension.
Further discussion?
Mayor?
Alderman Runions?
Just one question, chief. Will this be able to pick up the temporary plates? Because that is a major violation throughout the state that we've got... Some of them are six, eight months, some of them are a year old. Can we enforce that some way also?
It would pick up a temporary plate as an identifier. But again, it's not... The system's not geared toward traffic enforcement. So if we had an incident involving a car that had a temporary plate on it, the system would be able to pick up that information, and then we could work investigative leads off of that. But it's not geared toward alerting an officer about an expired plate.
All right. Because that is a major...
I agree.
...stream that the city and the state is losing.
Yeah, it's definitely abused. I agree.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Maloney?
Chief, the initial cost on here, does it include the installation or just the devices themselves?
Yes, the first year includes the installation, and the subsequent years, if you'll notice, it drops down a little bit. I think the...
Kirk, we negotiate.
250 apiece on the initial installation. So if we make the decision to move one down the road, we would be on the hook for another installation. But if we don't move them in subsequent years, there's no more cost in that regard.
Great.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And Kirk, chief, thank you guys for working hard to get this down because this started much higher than what we are looking at to approve tonight. And I think you guys were, you know, the team was very, you know, straightforward in working to get that reduced. So thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Maloney?
Aye.
Alderman Runions?
Aye.
Alderman Rousey?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Randolph?
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Mayor?
Alderman Randolph?
I move that we place bill number 7648 on its second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs?
I second.
Bill number 7648, an ordinance approving an agreement with Flock Group Incorporated for automatic license plate detection and authorizing payment.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs?
I move that bill number 7648 be placed on its final passage instead bill being acted.
Is there a second?
Mayor?
Alderman Hartman?
I'll second that.
Alderwoman Bibbs?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Randolph?
Aye.
Alderman Rousey?
Aye.
Alderman Runions?
Aye.
Alderman Maloney?
Aye.
Ordinance number 7391.
So bill number 7648 has passed, is now ordinance 7391. Is there a motion on bill number 7649?
Mayor?
Alderman Randolph?
I move that we place bill number 7649 on its first reading. I move that we place bill number 7649 on its first reading.
Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
I'll second his motion.
This moved in second, so.
Bill number 7649, an ordinance authorizing a one-year extension of the contract with Laser Pipe Services Incorporated for Police Tow Services.
Any discussion?
Mayor.
Alderman Hartman.
Chief, again, on that, and I'm glad we're using Laser. That doesn't really cost the city any money, does it? When you call and have them tow a car, like, does it, the person have to go to the tow line to get the car back?
Correct. The onus is on them to pay the tow bill to get their car out.
So our ordinance is just authorizing you guys to call them, right?
Correct.
And, I mean, in an incident, we may have to pay for a abandoned car, burn-up car or something, maybe if we haul it off. Is that right, Jamal?
That is correct. There will be instances where nobody claims the car.
Right.
They still need to be paid at one point. And there are times that they help us out with our own cars, too.
Right.
If it's not claimed, sometimes they'll do like a salvage title, and that's how they get their money is off of what they can. There is, I mean, if we tow a car related to a crime, we'll get a bill for that. But typically, most toes is not on the city.
And they always respond. They're a pretty good sized company, aren't they?
Very good company to work with, yes.
Great.
And they've been, they've been great to us publicly. They've been, they give us favorable rates, and they're always prioritizing us.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
The prioritizing is part of the contract, though, right? They have a response time that they're required to expedite our calls. Is that correct?
It is. I don't know what it's itemized. Do you have that? But we've never had an issue with them being delayed, even with bigger trucks. They have the ability to tow the big semis also.
Good. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Move that bill number 7649 be placed on its second reading.
Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
I'll second.
Bill number 7649, an ordinance authorizing a one-year extension of the contract with Laser Pipe Services Incorporated for Police Tow Services.
Any further discussion? You know, chief, and I'm also so grateful that Laser Tow is very responsive to you guys, especially when we have vehicles that are maybe abandoned on the streets, and, you know, they're, they're there pretty quickly to remove them. So we do appreciate that.
Mayor.
Yep.
I did have one other comment. Have we had any complaints on, from individuals, from their charges? You know, I've heard a lot of these tow companies, especially in Kansas City, are really just outrageous when a person goes and gets a car or something and storage and all of that.
From time to time, we'll get a complaint, especially if people will sit on it for a while and they don't go retrieve their car. The bill gets higher than what they think is normal, but.
But their, but their charges are probably as reasonable as.
True. I don't feel like they're gouging the citizens. But yeah, if a person waits too long, they do get a daily storage fee.
Mm-hmm.
So it happens from time to time, we get complaints.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for final passage?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Move that bill number 7649 be placed on final passage and said bill be enacted.
Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Ordinance number 7392.
So bill number 7649 has passed. It is now ordinance 7392. Is there a motion on bill number 7650?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Move that bill number 7650 be placed on its first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
I'll second his motion.
Bill number 7650, an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2023 budget of the city of Grandview, Missouri and appropriating funds.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Runions.
I think in the future, I know when, when I was on the board back before, the Aldermen were involved in the budget process. We seen the actual numbers as we went through the process, and then it was finally approved. Now we see the budget after it's assembled, and then we hear a progress report from the year before, and what they want to do in the coming year. But I think that it would be beneficial to the citizens that we be involved from day one and have our input because we might see something that would be better for the city or for our neighborhood than what the staff does. Doesn't try to override it, but I think it involves the Aldermen like we should be involved in the budget process.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
I'd like to thank staff for all the hard work that goes into that. I know this is an annual project, but we're pretty spoiled in having a very good finance department that wins a lot of awards with our audit process and our certifications here, that sometimes we, we take that for granted, having such a well-oiled machine. But I know a lot of hard work goes into this. So thank you for the staff that put all those hours into it.
Much appreciated.
You're welcome. We started at the beginning of May, and we get it to your hands by August. So it's a huge undertaking, and it takes a large amount of our time every week.
And I think that's the most important part, that the citizens of Grandview, hopefully they realize that you do start in May. And going through the process with every department head, every discussion, looking at what can we do, what, what should we be doing, and communicating that. And once that is done, then and only then do you bring that to us. And I appreciate the legwork that's done.
Yes.
And not only that, but you provide both to the residents of Grandview and to the Board of Aldermen a budget a month before we can even start this process of having discussions. And I thank you guys for giving that to us. And we have plenty of time to have conversations with department heads, like many of the Aldermen have gone to department heads and have discussions with them, even before the board sits down. So thank you, guys, for what you do and the way you do it. I appreciate that.
Not, the last thing, but not the least important in this case, is that this, these budgets are built based on you guys' strategic plan. When you guys spend that weekend with the consultants to come up with your strategic plan, we tied those plans into these numbers. Staff goes through a tremendous amount of mathematical calculations to be able to balance this. And I want to point out one thing now, we're recorded and I'm live. City's budget by state law has to be balanced, meaning that our revenues equates to our expenditures, unlike state, unlike federal government.
Well, state has to be balanced.
So when it comes down to deficit spending, we make sure that every dime is accounted for.
Well, and again, I do appreciate the effort that's put into that. And this year, I think by far, having the budget, what is the software we use this time?
ClearGov is what we use.
That is, that is amazing to be able to drill down to each and every line item and look at all of the funds to determine where the money is coming from and where it's going.
And Mayor, you mentioned each line item. One of the things that staff does on multiple occasions is we drill down line by line by line on every department's budget. And then we do it again with Jamal, for him to oversee what we've looked at. So there's multiple times we look at it in line item detail and history for the last five years of each line item.
Awesome. Appreciate it. Any further discussion?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I'd just like to add a caveat to that, that I want to thank the staff as well for all their hard work and their dedication in preparing such an efficient budget for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be remiss if we didn't mention the newest member of our team, Caitlin Lewis. She got started about a month ago. She was going about a hundred miles with her hair on fire for that month, and got introduced to the budget, the baptism by fire. She doesn't know it yet, but she's gonna have a leadership role in preparing next year's budget, so don't tell her.
She's excited.
I think we'd be a little remiss if we didn't also recognize her contributions to this process.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And she was a previous employee of the month. So yeah, she was recognized before. So awesome. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mayor.
Alderman Hartman.
I do want to appreciate your hard work and everything. And I do want to emphasize again, in, in investing in our people. I know this, this year was a pretty nice.
Big year.
Part of that.
Big year.
I appreciate that. And I'm gonna vote for the budget, but I think in the, in the future, that anything we can do for our people, we're losing people, you know? And we've talked about that. So I would rather be a leader of the pack than, than follow the other.
Absolutely.
Cities around. And I, and I, and I know that's why we're losing people. So I appreciate hard work on that, and anything you can do in that department, I think would, would very, very well be pleasing to, to our people, you know? I mean, that's, we have to take care of our people.
One hundred percent agree.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Move that bill number 7650 be placed on its second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
I'll second.
Bill numbers, bill number 7650, an ordinance adopting the fiscal year budget, fiscal year 2023 budget of the city of Grandview, Missouri and appropriating funds.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Move that bill number 7650 be placed on final passage and said bill be enacted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Ordinance number 7393.
Bill number 7650 has passed, is ordinance 7393. And staff, once again, thank you very, very much. Is there a motion for bill number 7651?
Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Move that bill number 7651 be placed on its first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second.
Bill number 7651, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with the Grandview Area Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development Services and authorizing payment.
And I see Kim Curtis in the audience, so thank you very, very much, Kim, for all that you do and have done. And Kim has informed me that Liz is not feeling well today, so she is not here. And since she's not feeling well, I don't want her to be here. And that's, that's a good thing. But we appreciate all that you have done, and looking forward to the blessings for your next chapter in your life as well. So, awesome. Any discussion on item 7651?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
I was gonna bring this up, another discussion, but this is fitting now tomorrow morning. There's gonna be a morning connection, so everybody's invited. It's gonna be Horizons or?
Yes.
What's the phone?
So let me, for the record, let me make sure we say that again, so that those listening,
Horizon Packaging Testing. And that's at the corner of Grandview Road and Martha Truman Road.
Northeast.
Yes. So.
Eight o'clock.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Maloney. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Move that bill number 7651 be placed on its second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Second.
Bill number 7651, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with the Grandview Area Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development Services and authorizing payment.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I move that bill number 7651 be placed on its final passage and said bill be enacted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Second.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Ordinance number 7394.
So bill number 7651 has passed, is now ordinance 7394. Once again, thank you very much. The next item is bill number 7652. Is there a motion?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
I move that bill 7652 be placed on its first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Second.
Bill number 7652, an ordinance establishing a procedure pursuant to state statute to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officers.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Is there a motion for a second reading?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Move that bill number 7652 be placed on its second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second.
Bill number 7652, an ordinance establishing a procedure pursuant to state statute to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officers.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for final passage?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Move that bill number 7652 be placed on final passage and said bill be enacted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
I'll second his motion.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderman, Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Ordinance number 7395.
So bill number 7652 has passed, is now ordinance 7395. The next area is order business. So let's start on my right. Any other business one has?
Just a couple of things. Jamal, I noticed the signs, the flags on the signs, I appreciate that.
No problem.
I think that draws attention to that intersection, and the people that is going through there, you know, like I did, I ran it a couple of times when I, when you first put them up.
Charlie, you hear that, right? Next time. We'll put a camera there.
Speak a little louder, is that what you said?
And Alderman Hartman, we also order the digital ones where it's going to be flashing that is solar operated, which Mayor really likes the solar option. So, they are, I believe, we're going to be receiving by the end of September, so we're going to add a few more things there.
Good. And, and the other thing, Mayor, was the homeless campsite in front of Captain D's.
Yes.
We all, we all love these people, you know, don't, don't get me wrong here, but I think that we maybe, I'm just throwing this out, could we make some kind of ordinance or something to maybe put some of that back on the, on the owner of the business, to not allow that, or what, how can we help those people, get them out of there, and not have that view from, from all the other people that drive down the road, and not only that building, but we have several vacant buildings.
That is correct.
If they move from one to the next, it's, it's, it's an issue, it's to our image, and so what, what have we thought about on that?
So we have ordinances in the books for that. However, we need the consent of the building owners, and I'll have Chief Eisman talk about that. We've been in contact with them, they're very cooperative at this point, and PD has been there several times. But go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, today we sent officers up there to deal with the old Captain D's situation there. There was a couple of squatters, homeless people, and they alluded to, there's a couple more that are spending the night there. We were able to get the actual property owner to come out with us. He's very committed to making it work. He's a little frustrated with the leasing, which is the old Captain D's franchise, who is not taking care of that facility either, but, so he's already made some steps toward, they're going to do some tree trimming, picking up some of the things that were left by, the squatters are there, and then we told them that they need to move on, offer them services, but what is typical, a lot of times they didn't want to accept the services, so unfortunately, they're, they're being displaced, they're going to end up somewhere else, is what I mean, but we are, we are continuing to monitor the situation there at Captain D's, and we've got kind of a standing trespassing order at this point, so if they continue to come back on, we'll get the owner out there, he'll sign a complaint, it'll be a criminal charge at that point.
So it sounds like there are, we have things on the books.
Oh, absolutely.
That will work.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
Well, the important thing, and let's, let's make sure everybody's on the same page, the important thing is that the owner has to give us permission.
Yes.
And if we don't get permission from the owner, there's not much we can do, because then all of a sudden, we are trespassing, and we don't want to be in that mode. So, yes, I agree, you know, compassion is important, and I think, you know, continue to show compassion is the right thing for us to do. But we're grateful that we did get permission from the owner to move forward with, and he will sign a complaint.
Well, let's talk about that real quickly, Mayor. What if the owner didn't want to sign a complaint? Then what options do we have?
That's, that's a very good question.
It would be outside the police department's realm, it'd be more into codes at that point, where they're maintaining a, oh, what we do, like a nuisance type of business.
That is correct.
Right.
We've had that before, but that goes, falls more into the community development, the codes.
So it could kind of still get resolved, only a different route, possibly.
So that different route is going to go after the owner at that point, if we don't have consent. The complication on, on these type of properties, these are long leases to a franchisee, so the owner, of course, don't want this to happen. However, the franchisee, who has the rights to utilize the building, if they're not engaged for A reason, B reason, it's sometimes tough to find them, but when we cannot find them, we directly go to the owner.
Yeah, and then, not only looks bad, but then you have sanitation problems, too, you know, when that happens.
No doubt.
Over a length of time.
Correct. No doubt, and if you remember, this building had a boarded up window, broken window, trash problem, and many other things with their sign. We had them correct all of these things, within the last, I want to say, maybe nine months, right? The building has been repainted, the broken window has been repaired, the trash has been picked up, and a few other things, and they covered the sign. But for the first time, I feel like the owner is aware of what we're going through, and it's a prime location.
And I appreciate what you said, Mayor, we have, do that with compassion, you know, so, but.
Somewhat related, I mean, it's, you know, it's obviously a national issue. Alderman Randolph, myself, we're on a 90-minute Zoom call today, dealing with this exact topic across the entire metro, and solutions they're looking at, which, or there's a wide span of solutions that are being discussed at this point.
Big projects.
Big projects. But I mean, I actually feel kind of fortunate that we're not dealing with some of the issues. If you've been to the West Coast lately, it's, it's unbelievable out there, what, what they're dealing with, so.
And that's what all pops in your mind, the West Coast, we don't want Grandview looking like that, you know?
Right.
Well, the other thing is that we hope that PD is successful gently, okay? However, if we, and I see we have a couple of community development individuals in there, Dave and Keith, you know, if we have to go the community development route, unfortunately, now you have time, and you've got to give them so many days to correct a problem, and so for now, it's, it's much longer. So ideally, we like that, you know, the gentle approach is, is always the best and quickest. So, again, thank you guys for what you do. Any other questions or comments? Yes.
Mayor, I want to thank whoever cut the grass on 140, the turnaround, because now I can see, you know, when you came off the highway with that tall grass, you couldn't see the cars coming down and around. So whoever cut the grass, Doug, whoever got to cut the grass, we appreciate them.
Good. You're welcome. On this side, any comments, questions?
Yeah, so as Chief Eisman said, yeah, we sat in on a Mark Unhoused Project Collaboration Workshop earlier today. It started a few weeks back, they, you know, did several interviews with kind of all the representatives from the different Mark cities, just to talk about the, you know, the unhoused problem, and talking about strategies that, you know, that we can do as community leaders, and, you know, what we can do as a region to, you know, try to provide some help, and, you know, more services and things like that, so. So I think the region is really engaged and wants to do a lot of things, but, you know, as I said, a lot of things kind of landed in the big project quadrant, because, you know, it's going to take a lot of work.
Big project.
Yeah.
Good point.
But it, very good meeting.
Awesome. Good. Anyone else? Yes.
And along those lines, I've got a couple of things, but there's a new state law, if they're on city property, that's enforceable now. This just went into effect the 28th of August, but if, if we've got people camping out on parks or out front here, and we can react to that now, that's, that's a new state law. The other thing.
Alderman Runions, I just wanted to address that, that has been our ordinance, so we have full authority on our own properties, so we don't have to wait for anybody to give us a consent, we are the owners.
But this just reinforces, it's a local ordinance violation, but it's also state violation. The other thing, Alderman Maloney asked a couple of months ago about the two bridges that we acquired, and so far, we've, we have not received any information. I think we need to know, you know, the expenses that were involved in both of them, and who really authorized the Bradley Bridge to be purchased and moved, because that was a major expense.
Sure, 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 I will, if I'm not mistaken, Doug provided an update, but if not, we'll find that email and share it with the group, and it was a very extensive one with regards to these bridges. And as far as the authorization goes, if there were any cost involved, this team was not in charge at that point, obviously, but that's the elected officials at a times approval, so we'll, we'll find that for you, too.
Yeah, I'd like to know, because.
Sure, you got it.
Because I think, I think they're both laying around somewhere in the parks.
No, one of them is at Parks, the other one is, if I'm not mistaken, at the Public Works Facility.
All right.
And Doug is actively looking for some grant money to erect one. Our biggest problem with one of them, especially the federal one, federal government requires it to be brand new, as it was erected 60, 70 years ago. That craftsmanship does not even exist, and if I'm not mistaken, there was a rough estimate of a million dollars. I could be wrong on this, on the details, but, you know, we could put many bridges on that creek a lot less than a million dollars, and we have many other options.
Absolutely.
But we did go to the expense of acquiring that, so.
Anything else? Alderman Maloney, you have any? Nope. A couple of quick things. Last week, we met with Congressman Cleaver at the Truman Farm Home, very good discussion. He is taking this on himself, and a lot of improvements have been made. The, the National Parks are making some significant changes, and if you go out there, you'll be able to look at it and see that, that they are making good progress. As a matter of fact, the little, the little porch area, they are supposed to have that done this week, so if you go out there and see that, that's going on. Congressman has also been able to get the National Park Service to tell us that they're looking at the paint building that, you know, we thought was going to be the visitor center, and trying to determine what should be done with that building. I think their attitude is to demolish it, but our thought was, you know, let's see if we can remediate some of the things in there and save that building. So, so a lot of discussions are going on, but the important thing for you guys knows that Congressman Cleaver heard us when he was here, and he's interested in that building, this is in his district, and, you know, he has two historic Truman sites, here and Independence, and, you know, he's, he's definitely interested in this. And I don't, don't think you have realized how much interest it is, is that President Truman is the only president that does not have a statue in Washington DC.
It's being dedicated this month.
It's going on September the 29th. The only president that does not have a statue in Washington DC is President Truman, and Congressman Cleaver said he's worked on this for how many years? I think he said seven.
Six years.
Six years? Six years. He's worked on getting President Truman there in DC. So on September the 29th, in Washington DC, that statue will be unveiled, and what, what an opportunity, what, what an encouragement that Congressman Cleaver has been working on to get that there. So we will have our President Truman, he'll be there, and during that speech, I think Congressman Cleaver mentioned that he's going to mention both the Truman complex and Independence and the Truman, Truman Farm Home in Grandview, to make sure that they all know that these are historic sites, that we should preserve. So that's pretty exciting.
Can we ask his staff if he's going to livestream that?
You know, that's a good point.
I, I don't know, but I can reach out to his staffers and see if it's going to be livestreamed. To be honest with you, I haven't thought about taking the day off and seeing that myself, no joke, no joke. And if it, if, if it wasn't because of August, I wouldn't.
I understand.
It's a big deal, it's a big deal.
Yeah, it's important. I want you guys to know that Congressman is, is really, you know, promoting that Truman Farm Home, and, and I think that's fantastic, to the point that he's interested in having, you know, our students, Grandview students, going out to actually do field trips, and, you know, day trips, and picnics and so forth. And Valerie has been working with the National Parks, and in October, there's going to be a, hopefully, the weather's going to be good in October, beginning of October, and there's going to be an event that the National Park Services are doing right there at Truman Farm Home. So more information will be coming, but a lot is going in, and we're trying to get the Truman Farm Home going in the right direction, so that was, that was encouraging. Again, Valerie and Aaron have worked hard on getting our livestream up, and Valerie has not given me any text messages or, or thumbs down, so I'm thinking things are going very, she told me, okay, things are going very well, so that's, that's a good sign. So again, this is, again, one of our objectives was to do live streaming, and, and here we are, so, so that's good. Jamal and Alderman Rousey and I had a chance to go to MML Annual Conference, and anything you guys want to, want to say? I've got a couple of comments on the annual conference, any, anything you want to add?
It was a great conference, a lot of good information, met a lot of good people, and a lot of cities have the same problem we have. And, and even the smaller cities are having a hard time keeping people, and that, that was kind of unusual to see, because you think the smaller cities would have a grass on there, people who live there want to stay, but it's really hard, police and fire, they can't keep them, you know, paramedics, they can't keep them, you know? I talked to one alderman and one alde- one alde lady, they said that they did everything. They, they raised their pay, they kept raising the pay, and they kept, we can't afford it, you know, and that, that's really been the hardest thing about it, it's money driven, you know, and everybody else is trying to outbid everybody else, you know? Everybody's looking for a solution, you know, hopefully, we can find ours first. That's our, that's what our goal, you know? And they kept asking about it.
Yeah, like Alderman Rousey said, if there's a common theme down there, it is, you know, retaining good talent, and it, it was, it was interesting across the board, so we're not any different than any of the other cities across the state of Missouri. And we had a couple of guys tell us Kansas is in the same boat, so, you know, a lot going on, so this is, this is not new, and the conversation continues.
Oh, yeah.
One other thing, and Jamal, we still probably need to sit down with IT, the whole IT department, and, and look at some things, because I did participate in cybersecurity. That was amazing. I mean, you know, we, you know, Hollywood did phishing and so forth, nowadays, they're doing vishing, voicemail, they are going through and now copying your voice and doing, you know, your voice sounds like you, and think that, that you are asking for something. And technology is just, it's just ridiculous. But there are some things that we need to do on a quarterly basis, they're saying, to